Alright. Something worked.
It's very low, Tony.
It's going right to the computer. You're speaking to the computer.
Okay.
I'll put it even closer. How about that? Can you hear now? Can you hear now? Can you guys on Zoom here?
Without the chairman. No.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Say it again. Charlie, if it's helpful, we did have a tabletop microphone and a long USB cord that we use in that room.
It has to be recorded, sorry.
Okay, can you guys hear me now on Zoom?
That's better.
Alright. Alright, um. Welcome to the September 6, 2022, hybrid meeting of combined public hearing and work session for the village of South. And start moving to our agenda. Thank you for your patience. No public, no public hearings on the agenda, so we're going to move right into work session material. The subdivision for 553, 554, this week is adjourned to, to be completed. But I think Monday's meeting. Same thing with 51, uh, waiting. The German squad is waiting on meeting. And this points, we all received, um. A draft. Letter from the people, from Kathy and the consultants with some issues regarding the property. And we're ready, we're ready to discuss that. So Kathy, can you kind of? Give us a little?
Sure, sure. Okay, so where we are with this is that the, the planning board had closed the public hearing for the purpose of moving forward with the decision. So, uh, Alice, Alex and I have been working on a list of conditions. And one of the items that has repeatedly come up through the process is parking and because, um, the, the trustees did approve this as a special permit under section 1165F back in April of 2021, and that was, um, modified to make sure that they got rid of the section G after that, because that's a separate special permit. The board of trustees had looked at an application, a plan that had a similar number of units, 46 resort units for workforce apartments, two market rate apartments, and 6,482 square feet of first floor commercial space. And that, that had had 77 on street parking spaces. And if you remember, that building extended, you know, most of the way up for radiant way and the planning board felt that it, you know, didn't have enough landscaping and, uh, you know, asked for a modification. The current plan has the two buildings that are perpendicular to radiant way with the pool in between, and it has, 59 parking spaces and part of the, um, what we were looking at originally was a, an application that had radiant way available for parking and there were, something like 27 parking spaces and that's, you know, just my estimate. Um, and about 15 of those will be removed according to the fire marshal's recommendation for creating a fire lane along radiant way. Um, and therefore that kind of brought us back to, you know, what are we doing about parking? If this is acting more like residential, um, you know, people extended stay type of resort where you might have more than one car per unit. Um, and just in general, um, does it make sense for the 40% reduction in parking that's permitted under village code? And, um, so I remember Tony, you had said, you know, okay, if it conforms with code, uh, with respect to the number of spaces, but is it enough parking is the question? And, um, you know, between, uh, the Southampton Inn, working together with the Southampton Inn um, as a, you know, as one big development, on-street parking on radiant way and also the use of, um, you know, some level of transit, kidney, helicopters, uh, train to get to the, um, to get to Southampton. It, it worked and plus there is the shared parking with the commercial uses, um, or that are fronting on Hill Street. So, um, so the, we were going in that direction. Uh, the, the building inspector had confirmed that, you know, we could, we could apply the 40% reduction or the way the code reads is 60% of the required parking spaces. Um, but with the, uh, loss of those spaces on radiant way, I went back to the, to the, uh, code and, you know, give it some worth of thought, you know, what are we going to do if there is a parking problem in the future? So, um, Alex, I don't know if I share my screen, would you talk about the, um, comprehensive plan, um, components of, um, that section of the BB, BB district of the code? Do you want me to share my screen or?
Yeah, if you, if you, if the board would be able to see it, can the board see if Kathy shares her screen or no?
The board can see it, but the rest of the, um.
The rest of the board wouldn't be able to see it, so maybe it doesn't make sense then.
Let's just discuss it for, for the best purposes.
Sure, so the, the section of code Kathy mentioned where they're able to get a reduction in parking spaces, that's one of, um, six requirements in that part of code. Um, so we went back to take a look and to make sure that the project was compliant with, um, the rest of those. Um, and the first one is that in, in order to further the comprehensive plan, um, it encourages, um, shared parking between adjacent lots. And so that's to help eliminate, um, entrances and exits and reduce traffic, you know, circulating, looking for parking. Um, and so it requires that a shared parking facilities shall be provided between adjacent lots in the BB district, um, except where it is not physically feasible. Uh, one of the other requirements there is for shared alleyways for pedestrian and/or vehicular traffic shall be provided uh, to connect the public streets into parking areas. Um, it says vehicular access to parking areas shall be provided by shared alleyways um, and individual lot curb cuts. Another requirement there is that the, the pavement be permeable and permeable pavement shall be used for alleyways and, and parking areas. Um, and there's a, a calculation there for, uh, for bedroom units. And that's the section of code where that, um, that, uh, 40% reduction, uh, comes from. So in a memo, we talked about, um, how we could make the project, um, compliant with the requirement for, for shared parking. Um, I'm sorry, for cross-access and shared parking. One of the things, um, you may note about on the existing site plan is that there is a cross-access, um, currently between this site and a Jason site, uh, at the movie theater that cross-access has been closed off by, uh, by a chain and provided some documentation from the, the fire marshal, the office had about that. That was a requirement by this board, uh, from 1983, I believe, when the site was originally developed, that they maintain a cross-access with the adjoining lot uh, for the purposes of shared parking. Um, and so one of the, the recommendations that I think that's included in here is that some kind of cross-access, uh, be restored, since that's what the, uh, the code requires.
Um, I had in the past, um, shown an overlay of the proposed hotel. As it's very similar to what is being proposed now, it's been, you know, changed on an aerial photograph and it does, it is helpful. So, I would like to share my screen so we could just have that up for a second.
Can we turn, should we turn it around?
Uh, it is for the, it is for the board.
Can we make it full screen?
Sure, yes.
Could you describe what we're, we're looking at?
Yeah, what is this? Uh, so can you see the aerial photograph?
Yes.
Okay, so the, it's very, yeah, yeah, I don't know how to make it bigger on your screen. Maybe that's a little better?
There you go.
That's better.
That's better.
Okay, okay, so, um, this has the, the two buildings and the pool, and this is the parking lot here for the movie theater. Um, and it just, it just sort of, and the, the, um, this is 51 Hill Street right here, movie theater, and then the other adjoining property is the Verizon building, which is wooded in the back, uh, where it adjoins the proposed parking lot and actually very much of the parking lot now. So the thought is that, you know, we're not just planning for now, we're planning for the future as well. We, you know, when this property changes hands and, you know, is redeveloped possibly when the Verizon property, and we don't want to close doors necessarily. You know, it, even if it is infestable at the moment, um, I feel that, you know, it could come up in the future where it makes sense, um, to create a cross-access here. And, um, pedestrian access between the parking lots as well.
Right, now, one of the, the things that's contemplated in the current comprehensive plan draft is that, um, sites along Windmill Avenue in particular might get redeveloped, uh, the Verizon site potentially being one of them. But Kathy, if you're able to scroll back up to that, um, you can see kind of how that lot, um, adjoins this lot and also joins the movie theater lot. Um, so we can see in the, in the future, there may be possibilities for cross-access between, you know, three lots there to have some kind of interconnected, um, parking area, which could serve as, as shared parking between multiple uses, which is what's, um, recommended in, in the comprehensive plan.
So can I just clarify, the area where you're pointing, the, the pointer is right now, that area, that's where you're proposing the access? I'm sorry, sorry. Yes, this is Terry Moan, I'm the project manager for the expansion of the inn and also DeeDee's husband, so that's probably how he got the job. Okay, so the, can you put the cursor where you think some?
So that is the prop, about the property line between the movie theater and the Verizon. We, we wouldn't as the, you know, I, I in this role wouldn't necessarily propose where it would go. Um, or, but I would, you know, you would suggest to have it someplace where it makes sense in the future.
Do you, you know about the, you don't have anything here that shows the elevation change between the, uh, proposed R lot and the adjacent property where you're showing the property line, is that correct? You don't have any?
That's correct, I don't have that.
So, so the fact that there's a significant variance in height between the, um, proposed parking lot as part of our development and the ground from behind the Verizon store is not shown in this, that's correct?
That's right.
And that would be one of those things that would go to the physical feasibility of making a connection would be, you know, the physical level change between one lot and the other, would that be true as well?
If it's not physically practical?
I, if it's a, I don't know what it is, a six-foot drop, a 10-foot drop, it's a, or four-foot drop, five feet, okay?
Four feet is not.
So. Um, no, this is a different piece of property. This is a property in the back, not, yes, so the, the place,
It's trees.
If we, yes, this is trees. If you scroll down please, to where, where you're, where, sort of, no, keep it big, please, thank you. So the current, um, I won't call it a connection, but the current driveway was, uh, in the southern parking lot, is that correct?
No, it was the second, it's building two.
It's where building two is.
Yeah.
And so that's where there's a four and a half foot elevation change. Right, so there's, and it's, it's, it's a significant drop. I mean, we can get, I mean, I'm sure we can show that, so, but that would be one of the elements of feasibility, I would think. Yes, or, and worse coming the other way. Alright.
Can I say some things?
Yeah, just say who you are.
I am, this is Linda Riley, I am the attorney for the project. And, uh, first of all, I want to say that this configuration has been before the board now for months, if not a year, I think it's closer to a year, that it's, no, I meant this board, this application, this, it's been a year that this is in front of you and nothing has changed. We never, ever had a cross-access easement shown on here, we don't, there are no, and, and I have to go, I have to step back a minute and say that I totally disagree with the fire marshal if he's saying that it was a 1983 requirement. I don't know that. Nobody has been able to show me a site plan from 1983, the file is gone. I've spent years looking for that file here, it's supposedly lost in a fire flood or some other calamity. Uh, the only thing we have, there's no file, there's no site plan, there's nothing. The only thing we have is one page of a, of a book from the minutes of a meeting, a meeting minutes, where it, it says something about working out something with the engineer about where to do something. I have, I have, uh, surveys that were, uh, issued. And I want to, I don't want to fiddle around with all of this stuff now, but I have surveys that were issued after those buildings and CD were completed and they show no cross-access. I have surveys that are dated later, some years later, that show a cut-through. But there was never any easement or agreement between our property and the movie theater that anyone can find and certainly not recorded of record that, uh, allowed for public access through those parking lots. There was a lease that the movie theater had with the village for a period of time which has expired. And of course, as you know, it's all cut off, you know, it's all closed off. The parking lot for the movie theater.
What's been sold?
So, I don't know, I don't know, I don't believe it has been sold, actually, I think there's a contract signed. I don't know, I don't know who it's with. I don't know what's going to happen. I don't know whether or not they're going to, I don't know what their plans are, and if you do, um, I'd be happy to hear them, but I, I haven't.
You don't want the cross-accessing, you have.
We never, we never wanted the cross-access for traffic. And I'll tell you why, because there are a number of reasons. One is what my client was just talking about, the, the drop in grade makes it, and in order to do it engineering-wise and do it properly, which was not done properly before, to do it properly will, will, will use up, will chew up a lot of space, uh, especially for car access. That's number one. Number two, they lost, they were going to lose their insurance over that informal arrangement with the drop in grade and the, it wasn't to, you know, my clients, my clients at, who owned 71 Hill Street.
Is that why the chain is there?
That's why the chain is there.
I was wondering.
That was the original, that's, that's the original impetus. The fire marshal objected to that in, in 2016, that's when it got cut off. And he objected to it, and I spent a good deal of time, and I have correspondence which I can provide to you, which between me and Rick DePietras and the fire marshal, in which, you know, I, I laid out why there is no legally enforceable uh, easement or cross-access. Of course, access thing is not just somebody wax a cut-through. And, uh, who, who knows who even did it initially, I don't know. But the bottom line is there was an insurance issue and to take out that amount of space, given the grade and the engineering difficulties would have meant a loss of parking for us, which we didn't want to lose parking, we wanted to, to comply with the code, which we now do, we comply with the code on the parking. We've said that, the building inspector has said it, it's been in, in, in Nelson Pope and Borges memos. And now all of a sudden to hear that, um, you're, you're, you're looking for something that isn't there, hasn't been there and was never proposed here, after all of this time is?
It's because the, it's brought up because of the loss of the 15 spaces.
But that's our, the parking code is not based on spaces on off-site spaces. This is what you have to comply with on your lot. That's, and, and we comply with this onsite. We're not.
I think it's what happened with the fire marshal to the way that it runs on a radiant way.
But we comply, we comply with, we comply with the code without, with, without any reference to any other parking lot. And let me just say another thing, this new planning study, which is fine, the new master plan is out there. Like, it, it doesn't say anything particular about this, it talks about goals and future and blah, blah, blah. But it's not adopted and it's not part of the code. It may become that, but you can't hold us up and turn us off and turn us away until the future reveals itself. I don't know, you don't know, nobody knows what's going to happen in the future. Uh, we, we comply with the code, it's a permitted use at this point because the special use was granted. And, uh, if, if, if there are conditions, you know, let's talk about them, but to suddenly ask us to redesign the project to allow for car, let me tell you another thing about that cut-through. You'll remember it and probably you'll remember it too. It wasn't used for shared parking. What it was used for was as a cut-through. Cars would come up Windmill Lane next to La Carreza and zoom across the back of the movie theater where they would dodge skateboarders and whatnot, and then zip through.
I'm hanging my hat and shame, but I didn't speed through.
Okay, alright, you didn't speed. Plenty of people did.
Understood.
And car, it was, it was used not to park, pardon me?
I also appreciated that for parking at the restaurant.
You, you, there was plenty of parking at the restaurant.
No, but I, I liked to make it that accessible.
Well, their lease is up.
Understood.
And I also used to bike there all the time and you can't bike there anymore, so it did used to be a way to get through the village. I'm not, I, I didn't know that you, you as the Southampton Inn had put up that up, I thought it was part of the village.
No.
Not because of the movie theater being.
No, I don't know who, I don't know who did it.
Well.
Oh, you mean the, the?
Yeah, the chain.
The chain, can I just say that there are two chains, there, it was blocked off by us and by the movie theater owner, because he didn't want it either.
Okay.
Okay, so.
It's been presented as a solution to a changed circumstance, what's been described as a substantial change circumstance since the village board approved it with the loss of these, what Kathy said, those 27 spaces.
No, no, no.
So it's been presented as a significant change and that that factored into the board's approval of it and that looking, in looking for a solution, they're looking to the adjacent parking lot in connection with the master plan.
Oh, we comply with the parking requirements, I think.
Well, that, that's the dispute.
Now, so, and, and it's not, it's, well, I.
It's not compliant and it's not what was in front of the board.
Well, you should be hearing that from the building inspector who, who, who is the only one who can interpret the code and say what's, what's required or not required under the zoning code. And he, he has actually said, it does comply, so I, I, where are we?
But that's, the dispute is that they're saying that the special exception grant was in connection with a number of spots that is no longer enough spots under the governing provisions of the village code. Therefore, it has to go back in front of the board. And there are not enough spots, so I think that the adjacent parking lot is looking for a solution, so I, I, so that's where the confusion is.
May I respond to that?
Sure.
The, the, the Board of Trustees' resolution could have attached any kind of conditions, it could have established parking. In fact, in fact, the, uh, that section of the law says the parking is up to them. Um, they did not condition their resolution on parking, on number of units, on any of those things. Um, so, and, and the number of, of, number, they, there are requirements in there about how many spaces for each hotel unit, et cetera, et cetera. We comply with those. Um, and obviously, it was the only, the only subject to in that resolution was subject to planning board approval. And, you know, obviously, plans change when they get to you because, and to everyone else who has to review it, you want more landscaping, you want different, you want a lighting plan, you want, we, we had to, you know, every, everything changes a little bit, we had to move the buildings around because there was a problem that the fire marshal had with the access around the back, having just one thing around the back. So, uh, it's just really, really upsetting to hear after the hearing has been closed and after one year of review, um, that, uh, all of a sudden there are fundamental redesign issues. That's, that's really, and let me just say one other thing. The code provides that, uh, we're entitled to a determination within 45 days of the close of the hearing. Uh, you know, I want to, let's, what, when, when can we expect that?
Can I say before we get, get an answer to that, but that's a very important question, is you do not think of the cross-easement as a one-way drive where you, we can park in their driveway, they can also take parking spaces from us. That's the nature of it. So if you think the site is tight, even though it's code compliant, if you think the site is tight, you make it possible for it to be tighter by the action, actions of a neighbor, we don't know what his plan is for the property and how he would use it.
It's a good one.
So for, for us to be, you know, put in a position where our hotel use, which is a, which is a, uh, that was approved by the village board and we've been discussing for a year, could be jeopardized by forcing, uh, us to give our parking spaces away to the adjacent user that we don't know what, who it is or how he would use it or the hours of his use. So for, for, um, you know, the, as I have been, heard the statute says if feasible. And that's the question here, is that whether it's feasible. I, I believe you are the board, you, you, the board are the finder of fact as to what is feasible or not feasible. And so it's your determination as to whether, you know, putting a potential driveway somewhere in the back that, you know, drops off to that tree-lined space somewhere in the back of the Verizon building, whether that's feasible or not, we don't think it is. And so we ask you to, you know, consider it as a business, if you're building a business and your business requires parking because you're hosting guests overnight, you can't just give those parking spaces away to, I don't know, I mean, it's, you know, who knows what sort of activity can go there, could be a used car lot, I have no idea.
But you, you have to understand that the loss of those parking spaces triggered us to.
Understand.
And that's what we're doing, we're having a conversation and.
Understand, but the statute doesn't talk about a requirement that there be parking spaces in front of, uh, you know, immediately adjacent to it, it doesn't talk about off-site. Uh, you know, immediately adjacent to it, it doesn't talk about off-site.
No, it's, it's just numbers, but that's a fact question, are the numbers after the radian way spots were eliminated?
But they haven't.
That was.
Numbers still, the numbers, you know.
Never part of any calculation.
Kathy, do you have the answer to that?
And the, um, that's correct, the, the calculations are, are, are forming with code. Um, the part where it references parking on radian way is actually in the village board's special permit section. Where, as Linda acknowledged, what the, the Board of Trustees had the ability to um. Impose restrictions on parking and they, in it, the code actually says that in consideration of parking on radian way. So um, one thing is that that Board of Trustees did see a site plan that had seventy-seven parking spaces. Uh, for a similar number of units.
That plan that they saw also called for the elimination of radian way. It called for a greening and an abandonment of, that the plan that they saw showed. No parking on radian way and showed a green space on radian way.
I thought they rejected that.
They did reject it.
No, they did not, no. They did not reject it.
They did not.
No, they didn't, it was not rejected, we withdrew it. So there has been, I mean, there has been no vote on the surrender.
There was never a vote on it. There was never a vote on it, but.
Are you able to submit topographical data showing the change in grade between the two sites?
I don't know if we can do that in the next thirty days, but, and.
I think it would be helpful if there was pedestrian access, maybe not vehicular access, but let's say the lot was full. And somebody decided to park in the other lot and they could at least get to the hotel. From the parking lot, from the, the, that's called the theater parking lot to the hotel. That makes sense to me that. There might be instances where that would be helpful.
That, that might be a more reasonable idea.
That could be handled.
But.
Especially an elevation change can be handled much more easily.
With steps. Well.
Than it could be for, for vehicular.
Oh, no, it's fence, it's required to be fence.
As part of dark skies, we're required to have this four and a half foot fence all the way surrounding it and, you know, so an open driveway would violate that as well.
Brings up another thing, so. From a plant.
It makes sense that if you're full. And people could have access to parking in the other lot, it would be great planning and it would be, it seems to me that it would be a good solution for all of. And I, I, I understand the concern about.
But how do we acco- then we have to accommodate somehow all of that change of grade on our plan?
I think there has to be an agreement.
There is no one to have an agreement with.
There is no, and it makes no sense at all on the wooded lot. I, I don't know, I just, I feel like we're going around in circles and, and the thigh bone is connected to the knee bone. If we put a pedestrian walk through there, we gotta put lights in. We, we, we have to because of, and then that changes the lighting plan. And you've got a dark skies compliant requirement in your code also. So it's like when you, we, we've been tweaking things because you have to, or, or the architects spent endless hours on this. On, on the engineers and. If, if we put in a pedestrian access, which is to me a more reasonable idea than having another road going through there. Uh, and I don't know how the fire marshal would feel about that either, but I, I don't speak for him.
I didn't speak to him about that.
Uh, well, what I'm trying to say is, uh. It's really, really, really uh asking a lot to sort of reopen this at this point.
Well, it's also beyond, beyond inconveniences in the time, I just think the feasibility of it. Which is the underlying question that you have to agree on is, is it something that. Radian Way was created because of a future plan to go all the way through to, um, I don't know the name of the street behind Cooper's Farm.
But when Cooper's Farm didn't exist, it was to go all the way to White Street.
And that was planning for the future and we created this, this cul-de-sac, you know, that separates these two properties. That plan, you know, may have been a good plan back then, it's been abandoned and so.
It was more than abandoned, the Board of Trustees adopted a resolution specifically saying they were not then. Specifically saying they were not going to ha- allow, allow the road to cut through beyond.
Beyond the circle.
Go around the circle. There's actually a board resolution from the, from the nineteen eighties saying.
Well, I agree that the planning board can make a finding that it's not physically, physically feasible to have the vehicular shared access. Uh, but we need something, I mean, I'm sure you can get topical, topographical data from a GIS system or from Google Earth. There's gotta be something, you know, I understand that you're not gonna be able to get a surveyor or someone like that to go out there, but. I, I think you can get some data for the board to review to make that finding. They can't base it on nothing, maybe a site visit.
I, I mean, we can provide something that will show the elevation change be, where that line was that you drew on the, the um. Uh, the aerial photo uh with our survey overlay. We can, you know, even if it's, you know, four guys out there with ruler, you know, with yardsticks or whatever, we could do something. And because the movie theater, the, the line was drawn, the only place where the, that line was drawn is the only place that we're talking about as being feasible. At all, and that's at the property, at the very end of the property line, of the movie theater, it's at the end of the movie theater.
Yeah, the. That's where the buildings are and where the chain is.
No, this is.
This is where our buildings are going, where the chain is.
Right, right on the property.
Our buildings are going right on the property line where the chain is. The south side, there's maybe, it has, it has.
The building in it.
But it's not gonna be attached to the new structures and is there a place for a pedestrian? Cross through there, which will probably be.
I'm not sure, there might be, yeah.
That might be.
There might be, but.
I like the idea of the pedestrian and I, I find that um. And. A, a way to go that, that may work.
Right, and if it's a condition. It's not gonna, it doesn't necessarily have to slow the process down, it could be a condition that's working on a model.
Right, but let's understand. If, if it's a condition of what, what you're saying is. We, you know, would have to agree to some uh easement with. The adjacent owner who is not the movie theater. He is actually, uh, they actually came and testified in favor of, uh, of our plan. Um, but we have no agreement with them. And unless they come before you and ask for a zoning change or a site plan change, there's no way to compel them to open this walkway.
He's talking about the business office.
Right. So.
That's what we're anticipating.
Right, I mean, so if you're, if you're saying, oh, let's have a pedestrian access there, only until, it's only triggered until. The owners of the adjacent property come to you for a different site plan approval and I have no idea when that would be.
And that, that's correct and that's why we're trying to, to plan ahead for when that happens uh in the future because we don't know what's gonna happen there. We're suggesting that we not close off any opportunities um that might arise in the future.
But they, they might wanna enter into an agreement, it could be. You know, whoever the new owners are might want to enter into an agreement with them to be part of the, you know, and if they. Be part in agreement that when it's sold, that would continue.
Where does this stand?
Well, I'm just, you know, I, that's. This, as I said, it's presented to us as a change in circumstances that required a solution because the number of parking spots was not sufficient. So there's. No, that's how it's presented to us, so there's a.
Who's presenting, the, uh, the staff is presenting this to you as a problem?
Yeah, that's, yeah, the thing that we're discussing today is something that was, you know, it's under discussion because of change of circumstances. So they, now we're talking about a walkway, the choice of change in circumstances, they're concerned about overflow parking, right?
Yes, yes, of course.
Okay, uh, D- DeeDee Godhealth, Seventy-One Hill LLC. We started this tw- in twenty twelve um. With a plan where radian was going to be green, I, I know Alan knows this. We had one and a quarter, or fifty-five thousand square feet of green space. So that the hospitality part of our village of Southampton would all look over park and green and, and. Impervious lot coverage and, and, and back caves, I'm sorry, pervious. Um, and in that plan, there was also a connection through the cul-de-sac. I mean, there's no reason with, a- as somebody in one of the public meetings, Mr. Verradian had said. It's just a driveway between her two properties. If that's what it is, why don't we? Have walking paths by opening up the north end of this, the cul-de-sac. And we can go to Cooper's Farm, we can go to Rogers Memorial Library, we can go to parking lots, we can go to windmill. It makes so much sense from a planning point of view. Um, and, and I am particularly concerned because I was served by our insurance company. Saying you cannot have cross easements. We, then you need village, you need to have some sort of liability waiver from the municipality. You need to have both property owners, if you're talking about Verizon, you tell me who you talked to in. For the next twenty-nine days with Verizon to open up into a green space that's not even built. And from a feasibility point of view, um, this is not insurable. Uh, but I, I don't understand the problem because over twenty-five years here and very much longer within this community. If it makes sense, I mean, if the property owner came to us, if the village latch said. You know, we would like to be able to expand and have our guests go for breakfast at Claude's Restaurant. You listen, you open it up, you ask whether you can. Forget about dark skies for the minute and put a break through a wall that we put up. Not because we wanted to necessarily, but because we wanted to be sure we were complying with the lighting, no more than four and a half foot candles. Um, we're at this late stage right now and. I feel as, I'm hearing that we're being asked to go right back to the get-go, we've been through several plans. But what's wrong with the north end for, for going and it's village-owned property? That can be a really lovely walking path down to Cooper's and will get us into the sort of more northerly part of the village.
But it doesn't increase the parking.
Yeah, that's, it doesn't increase, it doesn't allow you to park and walk to the hotel.
Well, you could park in, oh, because you couldn't park in a library lot?
You could, I mean, I, I'm not, I, you know.
It's right there.
And, and that might be one way to, to help satisfy those, the code requirements that there be pedestrian access.
Alright, but that had been offered from the get-go years ago by us.
I think the problem is, DeeDee, that so many of us haven't been here on the board for twenty-five years. And someone like Alex who hasn't been here even for any amount of time. And, and not even familiar with the original plan where radian way was the green space, which I think we all really liked that idea and unfortunately. It was knocked down somewhere along the line.
Well, it was. It did not have, it did not have the support of the board.
It didn't count, yeah.
When was the last time the Board of Trustees approved this plan?
Uh, well, they just adopted last month a workforce housing protocol. Uh, which deals. They, they adopted a, uh, an amendment to the plan in April twenty twenty-one. But, but not to the, they, I don't even know that they were looking at the plan in all fairness then, they adopted a, a, a change in the resolution, April twenty twenty-one.
That's what I thought. It seems to me what, a strong lack of this border now is. He's coming up with a declaration that says. You're short that you. And I guess the question, my answer might have, it was drug dealing today. There's two things come to mind when you have that number one. When the, when the fire marshal says, to be sure, everybody's aware of that. So how, number one, and number two. In the code, there was, it said, ancient, right, I think this comes up. About the business district. And actually, so, so I used to write names about the access. The green commercial buildings, which you sort of are. In the business district, they kept their apartment there. It's left up here, it's might be in a deficit for better ones, a reason feasibility in the middle. If those two issues have come together, in front of this market now for a long time, it might be by, at least in the period.
Can I just say, I'm sorry.
Is the, uh, trustees. Reason to worry about, you know, with not having enough parking, which is. And that raises a certain quality issue under the line of. To get out of the right line of issue, that's.
No, 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 no.
No, he hasn't.
No, you, you are saying. The fire marshal changed, insisted on a fire lane on, on radian way, he insisted on a fire lane. But it wasn't part of our calculation, we never had that fifteen spaces.
None of us are comparable with the green. Because we don't feel, I mean, I don't feel that you have enough parking on site for, for long-term plans of this project. And I would, I felt a lot better if there was parking on radian way. And I'm not convinced that you're not going to have people that can't park on site.
Can I, can I address that?
Well, and, and you know, and that's why, yes, you can, the other thing is. I don't know if it's a good idea to force people that might park behind the theater to have access to the hotel. Down through the inactive driveway on, on the east side of the theater, on the sidewalk. And then walking on roads again to get to the hotel. And that, that the only, I, and that's one of the reasons why. I'm kind of keen on the pedestrian access, even if it's all on your property, it seems to make sense for you. And for the, the safety and welfare of your, your, your guests.
Can I just say that, uh, to, to address that directly? We're a hotel, our guest comfort is a, you know, a primary concern. If we find a problem with parking, we can always do valet parking. We can change the way we operate in order to have our guests have a good, a wonderful experience. It's, it's, we, we can, we will find a way to make that work, that is, it's. Yes, it's keyless entry, but it doesn't mean that you don't take their cars, you can take their cars and, and put them into a valet lot.
I thought you said this was an unintended.
That's what it is now, but i- if you're saying that the operationally, when we get the, up there and operating. And we find that our guests have to walk a mile to park, you know, in someplace. Uh, then we will address that, we have ways of solving it other than uh trying to reconfigure the whole thing. You know, at this length, so it's an operational problem, if we find it's an operational problem, we have the ability to solve it onsite. Between us and, and the Southampton and across the street, we have a way to, we have the resources and ability to be able to solve it onsite.
Wasn't part of our calculation, man.
Alan, can I address that?
No.
I'm sorry, Alan, I'm, we're having a hard time hearing you on, on Zoom, but I just wanted to clarify, the parking on radian way is listed. As one of the special permit criteria, it doesn't count towards the onsite parking calculation. But it is listed as one of the criteria for which the board can consider on granting a special permit. Is the availability of onsite parking on radian way.
Thank you, that brings up one I thought, which means, thank you.
I was also hearing you say you're not absolutely opposed to the walkway idea. I mean, can we do some due diligence to find out if there's a party that would be willing to. And the reciprocal agreement that's filed as part of this doesn't seem like a huge deal unless you're.
Let's deal with the physical aspect of it first, because the physical aspect is important.
Yeah, and can walk between them and create a safe walkway and, you know, can two parties.
And not lose parking and not. And not lose parking and not lose parking.
And not lose parking and also have a joint.
And also have dark skies and.
But also have a joint obligation, reciprocal easement would be, I think, a joint obligation to repair it.
You can't require that, you can't require that if someone is not before you. You can, you can.
You can enter into an easement with a separate party that's reciprocal.
If the separate party wants to.
Yes, if they want to, but I'm saying, I feel like we don't know if they want to, but I was also under the impression that you're not categorically opposed to it. If it's a condition of approval, you know, I don't feel like we have that information, who's the other party? Would they want this thing? And then it's just a matter of a simple
Let me just.
contractual agreement that creates reciprocal.
Let me just say something else, just to put this in the mix. If we can't comply with it, if 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 you put a condition on your resolution, we have exactly thirty days to file a lawsuit to oppose it, that's it. So we 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 can't afford to spend, if we spend thirty two days exploring it with a neighbor and they say, you know, no, no dice. We've lost our opportunity to challenge the condition, so.
Linda, I don't, I don't think we want to put you in that position, we don't want to be sued, we don't want you to have to sue us. We've done a lot of work on this, we we want to get to a place of agreement, like it sounds to me like the board is amenable to accepting the pedestrian access and you could agree to extend our time to give you an approval and explore it.
Let me discuss it with my clients first, uh, no, uh, no, you want a determination? Nobody can hear you.
I'm, I'm, I would be delighted to agree to pedestrian access from multiple points. I would like to agree to a pedestrian access from the latch next door to Rogers Library in the north and a pedestrian access to the east for whatever happens to two properties there. That would be delightful, that was part of our original plan going back to twenty twelve and it has continued. I am not willing to continue to postpone and postpone. Yeah, I I feel that we have a plan that we've changed at great expense. And we've pivoted and I want to do everything that is a good site plan except for bats because and you could tell me that we need to do back pages and I'm sorry, but bats, I mean, it just I I don't want to have more time, I want to vote this, if this is not a good plan.
But you don't want to, I mean, if if in front of us, it sends back to the village board to read, to look at it again in terms of this giant change of circumstance, so like what we're discussing now is a more minimal approach, like I think, right? To create a walkway, get it to ameliorate some of the things like that. They park around the corner and they walk over here and it's like super.
It's horrible, it's not what we want. But but we will do that.
We we can talk to the owner next door.
Such a too.
Physical, physical feasibility.
But you were not.
We can't find, we cannot find the owner of the of the um of the parking lot, the only one we can find. Right, so how, so there's no way for us to make an agreement.
And and the owner, the seller is not interested in understandably in covering his property name.
So I I, so the answer is of course we're going to do that.
I think we all empathize.
That's a building.
Is it, is the building just the rock or is what's the, what's the unshaded dotted line?
I don't know what you're looking at.
Since their parking, you know.
How about, is there any way you go here?
Oh, you would. I can't lose parking space. Parking space.
Does the building go all the way to activists?
There's some kind of outdoor thing here, I'm not sure exactly what it is, do you know?
Um, I believe, I believe he had, there's some, certainly there's parking back there, there's also some picnic tables, something like that, like there.
Well. Yeah, but no, no, but that's, that's closed off, I I mean.
No, but I would, I would agree that that would be a great pedestrian access.
If if our adjacent, if our, if the adjacent owner wants to have, you know, our hotel guests walking into his parking lot.
You know what else? You could do it here and not lose a parking space.
Where would that be?
Um, just south of the
The north end of the other parking.
Yeah, because there's a walkway there already, you could all, just, you know, plan for future to attach onto that walkway.
Can you see?
That's the, that's the swimming pool. That's the walk, that's the path around the swimming pool.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, here. So it it's, it's possible.
Tony, you're, you're.
You can see wherever.
Is the proposed walk, I think you're talking about. No, 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 it would be, well.
Now that's, it's this one. What if that just met up? Or are there provisions in the future for this to be open as potential pedestrian access? That it's doable there.
This law, this walkway.
Sure, so if we can, if it's
If everybody agreed.
If it's structurally and engineeringally feasible, if it is an insurable condition, if the owner on the other, on the receiving end accepts it, if it's not highway, you know, a million dollars to create this because that's what someone needs to be paid for access. If it's insurable and if it's insurable, then of course we will. I mean, this is an integral part of the fabric of the village and the downtown village.
Well, but the.
But that would defeat the
Condition is like either, either, either we're, you know, either we're in a safe condition or and then it has to be legally enforceable and it has to move with the property or we're not creating a condition because we, the other things like potentialities are meaningless and it's not, you know.
Yeah, I just wanted to satisfy my own curiosity that there was a place.
And this is a beautiful place right here. And the fire, for fire access, this whole thing could be landscaped and and comes through village property to Cooper's Farm and to the library.
But it's not ours to get, that's not our, it's the, it's the villagers.
Where are we? You have another meeting in two weeks.
Right, I I think in safe, say that we're not ready tonight, I think this needs to wash through and we, we didn't I just read this at one o'clock this afternoon, so. Yeah, Kathy, Alice, can you help us out here?
I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble hearing you, um, what I'm hearing is that you want us to have a resolution of approval prepared for the next meeting.
That's what I want.
I know that, thanks.
When does our time run out?
Uh, when did we close, August first?
August, August fifteenth you closed.
August fifteenth, so we have forty five days, next meeting works, I think. I mean, based on what I'm hearing from the board and what I'm hearing from the applicant, it sounds like it's feasible to do these pedestrian alleyways. Um, I, you know, I'm not a planner, so I'm not going to speak for Alex or Kathy, but it sounds like a compromise to me and it sounds like it addresses a lot of the concerns, so I think we can get there, but um. I didn't hear that.
I I'm not, I I heard several things from Alex, number one, you want us to take out all of the, all of the um asphalt, even though it is, it is, you know, far, it's what, thirty, forty percent less than our neighbors? And you want us to to resubmit now and make gravel, or you want us to do it all as grass? Or you want it to be old fashioned the way we were, you know, in the nineteen fifties where it was dirt, I mean, uh, or do you, I I don't understand, that was one of your concerns. Is this going to take care of it if we have a path? Um, walking path, is that, is that good so people can park elsewhere, assuming they run out of parking places and walk through in both directions? Well, that was one of the other issues. And I'm just not, I'm not really understanding the Varian, if if we meet code and we we spent a long time talking about the code and the the forty percent.
I think we lost, oh, yeah.
We have one parking place for every one of the the hotel units. We have enough for the residential, which we don't even know whether the Board of Zoning and Appeals will approve it, so it might not matter. And we have what we need in terms of the parking for the um commercial that's there right now, so on property, we're good. The Varian, parking on Hill Street, parking on First Neck Lane, parking in some movie that might not be a movie, we don't really know, I mean, there is parking within the village, we have never been um, full to the extent that we spilled over and imposed on Village during the last twenty five years that I've known. Um, but I mean, I'm just not sure what the resolution is here, so we have some spaces which I think came up because we thought it would be really nice to have a drop-off on Varian for this new, you know, Buildings One and Two. And the Fire Marshal said no, we said fine, we took out the striping, you know, it's not our road to work with, it's okay, we don't need that. Um, and then now, Varian has parking on both sides now. Fire truck can go up and can go down, so now we have something new, we have a new condition, which is that we want to take one side of Varian and be sure that, I mean, that's completely, we're going to put cones up or something. I I don't really fully understand that.
It's a striped fire lane.
A striped fire lane, okay.
Like they have it shot in the centers.
Okay, all right, and that will make us safer and that's for so that's the fifteen spaces that wouldn't otherwise be there, even though according to code, we have everything we need to adequately park. This plan that has evolved over the last, I don't know, ten years or one year or two years, whatever your timetable is. But what what do we need to do? Because we, when we closed, when you closed the hearing two weeks ago, it was the same thing, it was, we're going to vote today, I thought we were just trying to get Zoom up so we could take a vote. Now we have.
We said we would have conditions ready for today, we did not say we would have a determination ready.
Conditions specifically that address and have wording for, and I hope it's not going to be at, you know, three thirty or four o'clock on the nineteenth, because we need time, it's not fair to you or to the gentleman doing the Zooms to not see it in advance and work with you.
Well, I think we should discuss it on the level while we're, while we have.
Number eleven, what is number eleven?
Well, it's, it's a draft.
Is this something, you're all looking at something that I don't have, is this something that I have or is it? I mean, I I I don't have the benefit, I don't, I mean.
It's a draft for our.
Your purposes only.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I don't know if that's necessarily true.
At this point, it's a draft.
I didn't know there was a draft and and the devil's very much in the details, the the language is very important.
And so if we, if we're going to try to solve the problem, we need to see the language.
Yep.
And, you know, I don't know, at some point you need to release a draft to us so that we can review it and negotiate it.
But I think it's evolving based on these discussions, so it's going to be a different.
Well, that's okay, I mean, we're evolving as well.
It changes the work, I think my, in my mind, the workforce housing that I always thought was going to be, you know, in perpetuum attached to the project, but I think that the village trustees voted that for its one year.
Correction.
So the, for the, for the, let me, let me refine that, for the agreement for the protocol. For who's going to review the leases, who's going to check it? You know, it's baked into the code that there's workforce housing going to be there. The question is really more in terms of the details of it. It's, it's baked into the six, one, one sixteen dash five F that, uh, and the resolution by the Board of Trustees, that there will be workforce housing.
And it's just the enforcement mechanism in order to determine how that that workforce housing, you know, in good faith remains there, it doesn't, that doesn't.
Ends in twenty years.
Our, our agreement is for twenty years.
Agreement, what?
To, to follow these certain protocols for who gets a lease, who doesn't, what the lease has to be. That it has to be this, this and this, and how it's going to be reviewed, whether it's going to be available to the public, those lease.
Why would that end in twenty years?
It won't necessarily. But you can't have something that goes on and on and on and on forever, that's a, that's an administrative thing. We're not talking about a property easement here, we're talking of, you, we're, we're just, we're.
I obviously don't understand it and I would love to, if you could give me five minutes, like I, all I know, I just, if you can explain it to me, I would really appreciate it.
Okay, I mean, the code says that in in one sixteen dash five F, that there has to be workforce housing in conjunction with a resort hotel use. So we, we, we don't have, we can't like walk away from workforce housing altogether. What, what we went and did with the Board of Trustees recently was develop a protocol for how that's going to be administered. Things change over the course of twenty years, um, lots of things change. If if we, if we cease to use the if we cease to have a resort hotel, you know, I don't it might change, anything could change, the site could be redeveloped, but it would have to be redeveloped with approvals and through the code and everything else. What we've got now is a special exception permit that requires workforce housing as well as allowing the it requires. No, no, we're not specific.
As I understand what you've asked us to do is number one, get some elevation uh data for the area that was marked, um, I guess it was Kathy's overlay right at the property line of the, of the existing uh theaters parking lot. What happens to that elevation from our parking lot to when you fall over the cliff? You know, well, how big is that gap, how big is that drop? And we'll, we will try to get, we'll get some data, I don't know whether it'll be survey quality, but we'll get some data to talk about the elevation change between those two. And secondly, to look at the feasibility of extending or having the uh, ability to extend that walkway to the adjacent property to have a pedestrian walkway through at that one location. Those are the two things you've, that I understand that you've asked.
That's my understanding, is everybody else.
That's, that's, that was.
You can certainly take measure and know what the, the change in elevation is. But what do we do with that within the how do we have you be comfortable that this site plan is okay? And also, I'm very concerned with this other issue of suddenly now striping a lane of Varian and therefore there's parking missing and therefore the calculation depended on and that we all worked with and worked on and then um, and conformed, maybe off by as many as fifteen spaces, that's like the end of it. And then if you want us to put pedals down or, you know, what is that, RC something? I don't think it's attractive, but we can do that if that's the requirement.
Are you in front of the firm, Bill? That's what can be made firm. Yeah.
I mean, of course, we, we would.
No, I, I'll just go back to, I think, day one, the first time this application was in front of us, and I was sort of a novice and I heard about a calculation that reduced the amount of parking because, having been, just from a common sense point of view, and I, I would go back in the record and check it, I thought, why would we want to reduce parking for a hotel? So that's why, and, and then I'll just reiterate where I said earlier. Uh, the, the parking out on the radio way sort of made me a little more comfortable with that, and now it's gone, and that's why we're bringing this up.
Can I ask, who had, who made the determination of the fifteen spaces? Who actually measured it and from what point to what point?
It was, it was an estimate for me. I don't, I don't know that it was fifteen spaces, yeah.
Okay, so I mean, but that's critical because we're talking about the spaces that we actually have. If we're only talking about, I mean, right now, we currently have the ENF building, uh, and upfront, and that doesn't need a fire lane. It has needed one for twenty-five years. So up until the first, uh, the driveway, that parking sp, that parking space should be, uh, preserved. You don't need to change that, I don't think. You may be talking, and you certainly don't need it beyond, uh, where it's parking lot, because you're really talking about only where the two buildings are. So we, I would like to review with you the measurement of, or the count, because this magic number of fifteen has become suddenly a poisonous big number. Maybe it's only seven. Let's figure it out. So, um, we will come back to you with that calculation. We'll share that with you, Kathy.
Yeah, I think, I think your, your engineers had sketched in, you know, parking spaces on the side of Radian Way that isn't going to be striped. So they can certainly, you know, just sketch those in to see, or you could just, you know, you could just draw them, uh, measure it. Um, yeah, I just did a quick, you know, if that's twelve, then that's fifteen, because that's what you have twelve on one side, so.
I mean, we'll take a look and see exactly what we have.
Yeah.
And we should, but your plans show a no parking area adjacent to E and F, but the latest revisions based on the pair.
That's what the fire marshal asked for, but perhaps I didn't discuss thoroughly enough with the fire marshal. I was anxious to be cooperative and I was anxious to move this along. And certainly I didn't think of those parking spaces as ever being part of our calculations. So maybe I need to, if, you know, if I can get the fire marshal to sit down with me and I can review the state code with him in terms of what the fire regulations are, maybe, maybe that'll be helpful too.
Um, just on the permeable, the permeable pavement, um, there are out, there are asphalt pavers, not pavers, not, you know, individual pavers, but paving materials that are more permeable than asphalt.
And we probably.
And that's what the code actually has, um, permeable pavement.
Now, you've looked at our drainage, our, your engineers have looked at our drainage system, which is all based on impermeable systems.
Yeah.
So, then back to the hip bone is attached to the thigh bone is attached to the knee bone.
So, yes, the whole drainage.
The whole, the whole drainage plant will be different.
But it could be better for you, it could be less.
Yeah, it would be less expensive to install, less drainage, or.
Yeah. From one sixteen fourteen K four. So that's after the requirements for, for shared parking and, um, and cross-access, it does say permeable pavement shall be used for all alleyways and parking areas. That's where that came from.
When was the last time that was required, if ever? I mean.
When the last time anybody installed a parking lot in the VB?
Well, you know, I, I don't think that anyone has proposed a parking lot of this size in the VB district. I don't think when they adopted it, they were thinking about Varadian Way. I think they were thinking about Hill Street. Excuse me, not Hill Street even, but I think they were thinking about Job's Lane, Main Street and Hampton Road. And if you go back and you look at that two thousand and thirteen planning study, it's got all these balloons over that area and it shows all these design guidelines that are very much looking like what you see on Main Street and what you see on, on, on Job's Lane and Hampton Road. It is, there is nothing like Varadian Way in the Village Business District, except Varadian Way. This enormous, this eight hundred foot long road to nowhere with only two property owners on either side, one on each side. That's it.
Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would be a case for the Board of Zoning Appeals if this property is unique and couldn't meet the requirements here. That would.
Uh, yes, and also, you know, the building inspector is the one who determined that this use was eligible for the reduced parking. And he has indicated that you need to meet all of the criteria in one sixteen dash fourteen K.
Well, that's news to me.
And the numbers seem to be too off where the calculations that you're going back for are just going to delay things rather than if there's a compromise on the table that would make it more, you know, that will expedite it. I, I don't. It just seems like we should be moving forward to compromise. And as you say, the, the master plan is not at the.
It's not adopted.
Stage right now, but that doesn't mean that it doesn't change the.
You know.
Calculus and the, the application hasn't been approved. So it's, it's, you know, it's still in front of us with our board having the power to either say yay or nay on conditions. So in terms of, like, if, if we started off here saying we need a car, you know, access, and now we're at a pedestrian access, which just seems a lot more, a lot less impactful on, you know, or what we have to do here than, you know, than a car access, a particular access that we should move towards that. Just from my reading of the, you know, conditions there in front of us today. If you're open to that, we can.
When can, when will you be comfortable sharing those conditions in draft form with Linda so we can, look, I mean, again, this has been like whack a mole. Alright, so we make a pedestrian access. It's a wonderful idea. Started there. If we can do it, of course we would. Then we have, okay, we have a new, you know, an asphalt that I may not be as aware of as all of you. That would be great. And now we have, I mean, what, what else is there? What is in this draft that, that might be something we need to address in terms of conditions?
We didn't make up the, the asphalt. It's, it's in the code. You, 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 your consultants should have known that.
Right, and the drainage plan and all of the calculations of impermeable lot probably would be incorrect, because I know that they, they don't say that. But that, that's good news. That would be a wonderful thing to have come out of this. What else is in this draft?
We don't, we don't know what else.
We don't, don't know whether the conditions that you.
Is there anything else? An easement has to be between two property owners. That's the definition of an easement.
Well.
We can, we can ease them on the north end between village properties and.
The radius.
That would be for Varian, for Varian Way to break through to Cooper's Farm.
The current owner won't, is totally uninterested in doing anything that would, uh.
It's on the, he, he still owns it.
We've spoken to him. If the potential buyer doesn't object, when he's in returning that, because it could be enforceable.
Why would the potential buyer not object? Because he doesn't have any proof of plan. He doesn't have any plans.
Great thing that everyone wants. I, I don't know, because overflow parking can go there and you can have people.
As I said, you know, it's just not, it's not as though his lot is always the receiving lot. His lot could be the donor lot and exacerbate the conditions that we have here.
He doesn't know what he wants. I don't know that he, how could he have any plans yet?
Yeah, thank you.
I think we can share these conditions by the end of the week with Linda.
Yeah, they might be revised after this conversation.
Okay. It will be revised.
Thank you.
And to clarify, I don't think that we would necessarily requiring a fully engineered access, you know, fully executed by all parties. I think what we're saying is.
One second, because nobody heard you.
Can you say that again?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
I think, just to clarify, I think what we're, uh, what the conditions would require is not necessarily a fully engineered, um, access, executed by all parties at this time. I think what it's saying is to show it on this property, agree to it, and at what point that the neighboring property comes in, the planning board would put the same conditions on so that it could be effectuated between both properties. Alice, am I describing that right?
Like, like a tap street in a subdivision.
That's right. That we don't necessarily need all of the, it doesn't have to be fully agreed to at this point. Um, we just wanted to plan for it as the adjoining properties come in to the planning.
You would have to locate a place for it.
Yes, you'd have to show it.
Which is where the difficulty lies, I think. But we'll, 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 we'll talk.
This comes back to the physically feasible question.
Goes back to physically feasible, right? So.
And you need to have an escalator for one foot for everything, you know.
I mean, it would be if it's an ADA compliant.
Railings, you can't.
Right.
And it has to have lighting.
And which violates our lighting standards.
Very iterative.
I mean, I think in a way, those two provisions, the, the dark skies and this X cross-access violate each other. You know, they, they're mutually incompatible and the.
Uh, you can have, you can have footpath lighting without it being, um.
Spilling over to the.
Would be in compliance. So, um, I think it's really just, it's really just a, you know, the future cross-access agreements that would be part of this. And if you can show that it wouldn't be feasible on certain locations, you know, where, where is it infeasible? And where is it practical and possible in the future?
Okay.
And is that all there is?
Are there any other conditions that we need to worry about?
I'll get the documents to you, like you said, by the end of the week, right?
Yes.
I don't think there's anything else in here that's worrisome. This is, this is the big thing that we were worried about. That's why we're talking about it.
It's just everything we've been discussing for a year.
Okay, I mean. You never know until you see it.
We, we don't have them in front of us, so they're our three minutes that we have to. Basically. Red and blue. Sorry. Right, Andrew, now let's wait until the next meeting, but we'll get all of them.
Okay, the, the, um, revisements from Kathy and Alice, I mean, they were sent out to the board, but I didn't get any feedback. Alan, I know you were not there on the fifteenth of August, but, um, and I think you said it looked okay, but on August first, I didn't get any feedback. Okay.
Okay, so, thank you. Um. That, and that's the last I'm on our agenda. Second.
Second.
All paper. Thank you, Zoomers.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Sorry about that.
You get a grown up.
Are you Charlie?
I am Charlie's son.